Hello there, everybody. Good evening. We're off to a little bit of a late start, but all the technical issues have been worked out at this end. Welcome, everybody. I see we've got a full house here and again, we're in thoughts with the deputy mayor, who continues to be off on leave for a little while while she convalesce. So moving on to the agenda, which you see before your council, including there's a couple of proclamations there I have, but also an item, an important item for planning, engineering, development side kit. And I'm going to call for a motion, please, for today's agenda, including those items moved by councillor Lane and second by councillor Locke. All in favor of the agenda and those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. Let's do the land acknowledgement. We begin today's public council meeting by respectfully acknowledging the problems of Newfoundland and Labrador as the ancestral homelands of many diverse populations of indigenous peoples, including the Biotech, who have contributed to 9,000 years of history on the island of Newfoundland. Today, this province is home to diverse populations of indigenous and other people. We acknowledge with respect the diverse histories and cultures of the Mi'kmaq, Inuit, and Inuit. We honor this beautiful land together as we strive for collective healing and true reconciliation. Council meeting passed was August 22, 2023. You see before you the agenda. Sorry, you see before you the minutes, but first, any errors or omissions? Hearing none. Moved by councillor Antle and seconded by councillor Rice to adopt the the minutes. All in favor? And those opposed? Carried. And for business arising from those minutes, please quote the item number. Back on track. Let's move on in the agenda. I don't see anybody's hands up or nobody's calling for the floor, but we will do a proclamation for Arthritis Awareness Month. Whereas community support has been critical throughout Arthritis Society Canada's 75-year history, enabling the organization to fulfill its mission to fight the fire of arthritis with cutting-edge research, bold innovation, fiery advocacy, and evidence-based information and patient-centered support. And whereas arthritis is not just arthritis, it is a serious disease. It causes debilitating pain, restricts mobility, and diminishes quality of life. Six million Canadians, one in five, live every day with the fire of arthritis, and there is no cure. Without a greater spotlight on this growing issue, the number of Canadians with arthritis will rise to nine million by 2040. And whereas during Arthritis Awareness Month, we seek to raise voices and awareness, we are encouraging everyone who lives with arthritis, excuse me, and all those who know and love them, to fight the fire of arthritis. And whereas Arthritis Society Canada is Canada's national charity dedicated to extinguishing arthritis for good, therefore, be it resolved that I, the mayor of Mount Pearl, on behalf of my colleagues on council, we do hereby proclaim September of 2023 as Arthritis Awareness Month here in the city of Mount Pearl. And I fix my signature on behalf of my colleagues as well as the city, and that is now proclaimed. Any comments or questions? I think we've all been touched by somebody with arthritis, councillor Antle, then councillor Fry.
Your worship. It's funny when I saw this. It's not funny. I guess when I saw the arthritis proclamation, it was only about four or five months ago. I ended up having troubles with my knee. I didn't know what was wrong with my knee, and it got worse and progressively worse. And I finally went to the doctor. Lo and behold, I have arthritis. And it's a pain that just doesn't go away. You know, if you have arthritis, you can just certainly understand that it's just continual. And within four months, you know, it went bad. But last week, I got a cortisone shot. And I'll see how that works. But you know, the pain's gone away. But I certainly understand. I feel for people who have arthritis and onward and upward, I guess. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Over to you councillor Fry.
Thank you. Yeah, I was I was gonna quote a statistic that says nearly one in two seniors over 65 have arthritis.
It's me and you, Bill.
Arthritis. I wanted to talk to arthritis. I'm happy to see this here because it's one of the oldest known diseases. It's been on the go for a long, long time and affects so many people. And it's a very complex disease. And it has, you know, there are over 100 different types of arthritis. So like councillor Antle, I mean, that's, that's, it's a very painful debilitating condition. That one is, that one is affects a lot of people. But there are also a lot of other types of arthritises as well, such as rheumatoid arthritis. And these are more inflammatory arthritis, rheumatoid arthritis, childhood arthritis, anglosyn spandulitis, and seratic arthritis. And the most common form is osteoarthritis. So it's a very complex, very complex condition. So arthritis results in painful inflammation, stiffness in the joints, and if left untreated, arthritis can cause joint damage and/or changes. So while it affects people of all ages, the likelihood increases with age. And it's not just seniors, though. People of of working age are also affected with over half of the people with arthritis under 65. So it affects a lot of people. And it's good to see it here. And I support this proclamation very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Any further comments? Hearing none. I'm going to invite some guests up because we're going to talk about proclamation in relation to welcoming week, which is September 8 to the 17. It is my pleasure, council, to introduce you to Lloydetta Quayco again, head of sharing our cultures, a member of the Order of Newfoundland and Labrador. I think she's also on the Board of Regents now at the Memorial University. And if she lived in Mount Pearl, she'd probably be sitting as a seated member of council. Hello, Lloydetta. And joining Lloydetta today is Benny. And there's Benny there and Divine. So welcome to you all. Good to see you. How about I read the proclamation? And then we can spend about an hour talking about all the things you have planned for the month of September. Benny, welcome, bud. Good to see you. Let's go. All right, he says. You hungry? I am. Whereas September 8 to the 17 of 2023 is welcoming week for newcomers in Canada. And where sharing our cultures contributes towards building inclusive, equitable, and cohesive communities. And where sharing our cultures open house event on the 15th and 16th of September is to bring together the community to engage, celebrate, and learn from each other. And whereas newcomers are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. Therefore, I, the mayor of Mount Pearl, on behalf of my colleagues on council, we do hereby proclaim September 8 to the 17 of 2023 is welcoming week here in the city of Mount Pearl. And it is my pleasure to sign that on behalf of all of us. And from all of us to all of you, we have a warm welcome. And we're glad you're here in the chamber. And Lloydetta, tell us what we're going to do for welcoming week, because I want to emphasize that you're probably going to tell me of all the places you can go and visit, but it's a regional event, just the same, right? As part of that. I think that's on.
We are? Thank you. I was just saying, good afternoon, and thank you so much, worship, and councillors, for allowing me to be here with Divine and Benny, of course, but here representing Board of Directors for sharing our cultures, and to have the opportunity to speak to you today. Of course, sharing our cultures, about 90% of our friends and guests that we work with, primarily young people, are newcomers to Canada. And we provide the kinds of support and resources and information that they need to be able to thrive and to actually integrate into the society. So welcoming week is an exciting time for us to bring together both newcomers and long-term residents, the locals, to find out about each other, to get to know more about each other, engage in conversations and activities. So on the 15th and 16th, at the
Well, Lloydetta, don't go way too fast. Don't go way too fast. But it's, you know, it's nice when you come to our chamber. And I want to thank you on behalf of the city for sharing this week with us and also inviting us as as council members and staff to join you on the 15th and 16th. So if you got a little bit of time in your calendars, yeah, pop down. I don't think you'll regret it. You'll see something hopefully new. And I think that's the whole point, is everybody sees a little bit of everybody else, right? So I want to thank you and Divine and Benny. Benny, you having fun? Benny, how about we get a picture together? Would you want to do that? You like pictures? You okay with a picture, Divine? Yeah, I know we have John. John Quayco's here. And John, you're going to take the photo, are you? Come up, council, please. All right, welcome back, everybody. We're going to start committee reports, the Recreation and Community Safety Committee report. Councillor Chelsea Lane, please.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take the first item, and then I'll pass it on to my colleague councillor Antle. So the first thing on our agenda is the milestone event funding application for the Mount Pearl Public Library, or the Ross King. The committee recommends approval to release the milestone event funding to the Mount Pearl Public Library in the amount of $5,000 once all recipients have been received from their 35th anniversary celebration event. The celebration event scheduled for October 14 will acknowledge the importance of the Ross King Memorial Library to the community, as well as provide awareness of the program currently being offered. And I just have to comment that we actually have quite an amazing library here in Mount Pearl. And it's actually getting more foot traffic than ever. So I think it's great that they're going to be scheduling an event. And I think that the volunteers there are very deserving of recognition for all that they do, because the volunteers in the library board have been there for a long, long time. I think some members have been there upwards of 20 years, I believe. And the library wouldn't be where it's to in functioning so well and thriving if it wasn't for the volunteers that are involved in that as well. So I think this is absolutely phenomenal. And that'll be it for me. I'm going to pass it on to my colleague there, councillor Antle.
And I want to thank councillor Antle for lending me his, some of his computer equipment while he tag teams there with councillor Rice.
I know mine, my, as councillor Locke said, I know mine by memory, but mayor. And yes, Pat Walsh and Dave Doherty, I think they were at the original members of the Board of Directors at the library. And for a second one for our committee is the the operating subsidy for the arts in Mount Pearl. And we're all quite happy with that. The committee reviewed the Association for the Arts in Mount Pearl's activities report in the financial statement. The committee recommends approval to release the Association's 2023 operating grant in the amount of $10,000, based on the current MOU and with the city and for future activity plans for the association. And I so move.
Moved by councillor Antle, and thank you. Seconded by councillor Lane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor? Counter-minded? Carried.
And number three is the, yes, the glacier is back open again. And the public skating dates are on our website. You can take a look on our website and take a look at what it is. And I'll let in the time for adult senior noon skaters back again, and the parents and top family skates. So just take a look at our website, and you'll see all the information. And that's it for us, your worship.
Thank you very much. I neglected to call the motion on the milestone funding for the Ross King Memorial Library. So I'll call the question for that application and the release of the $5,000. All in favor? And those opposed? And that was carried too. Thank you. Planning, Engineering, and Development Report, councillor Rice. Thank you.
Take your worship. So our number one on our agenda tonight is Olympic Drive resurfacing, the widening of the sidewalks. This one is. So the background of this one, council was previously advised that the contract for Olympic Drive resurfacing was awarded to Farrell's Escavating Limited for the amount of $798,933.75, HST included. So it is recommended by the Planning, Engineering, Development Department that the sidewalk be widened during the resurfacing of Olympic Drive. This widening should be consistent with other collector arterial streets, and would provide greater width for pedestrians, improve accessibility around major recreation facilities and library, and enable better snow clearing. Contract change order number one would include sidewalk widening from the existing 1,500 meters going to 1,800 meters at an estimated cost of $41,715, HST included. So recommend recommendation from Planning, Engineering, Development Committee recommends approval of the change order number one payable to Farrell's Escavating Limited for the widening of sidewalk Olympic Drive from 1,500 millimeters to 1,800 millimeters at the approximate additional cost of $41,715, which is within the available budget. And I so move.
Moved by councillor Rice. Thank you. And seconded by councillor Fry. Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? And those opposed? Carried.
Thank you, worship. Number two is our building and occupancy permit listing from August 14 until August 25, 2023. So the Planning, Engineering, Development Committee recommends that the building issues permits issued for this period showing a total construction value of $1,965,040 be approved, and further that occupancy list be approved as presented. So if you just scroll down your kit, you can see there's quite amount of, for the residential part, there's quite amount of exterior renovations, fencing. It looks like people are doing a lot of work in their home properties this summer. And also, if you look, it's part of the commercial development as well. And I so move.
It is moved by councillor Rice, seconded by councillor Fry. And we're talking about the construction value, not $1,965 for residential and commercial and occupancy. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, worship. I'll pass the next part over to my colleague councillor Fry.
Thank you, councillor Rice. I'm going to start with the development permit listing for the period of August 14 to the 25. The Planning, Engineering, Development Committee recommends that the following development permits be approved as presented for the period above, August 14 to the 25. And there are two here in our kit. There's one for Xylo's Canine Kingdom, which is kennel use on 952 Topsail Road, and the Salvation Army for an open-air assembly use at 106 Ashford Drive. And I so move.
It is moved and seconded. 952 Topsail Road. Is that the one that's before us in detail? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion? And those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Now, just for information purposes, we have some capital projects updates. So for the information of public, our Spruce Avenue upgrading is almost completed. Roosevelt Avenue upgrading, the underground replacement is underway. For Farrell Drive, that's Holden Street to Evans Place, the major underground replacement is underway. Olympic Drive resurfacing, and this is including the sidewalk and curb replacement. And the work is to start in mid September. So I guess that's next week. And our asphalt and concrete repairs, the catch basin and maintenance repairs are ongoing with an estimated completion date of October the 15. And we also have one other item, your worship, which is outside the kit. And this is regarding a proposed kennel use for number five to seven Commonwealth Avenue. So the city is in receipt of an application from Republic Pets for a change of use, kennel use at five to seven, sorry, Commonwealth Avenue. The subject property is located in the commercial mixed-use zone, and it kennel use is within the range of developments that council may permit in this in this zone, subject to Regulation 4.17 requiring public notice. The development intent is to renovate and possibly expand the kennel building at the subject property to accommodate this proposed kennel use. A fenced area will be erected at the rear to accommodate outdoor space for animals, and operating hours for the outdoor area would be 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. Prior to making a decision, council invited comments in writing, and also held a briefing session on August 24 in the city's council chambers. Now, this is a discretionary use of council, and it is approved within the commercial mixed-use zone. So council has considered all the concerns raised, and appreciates the interest that was shown. And the concerns raised were mostly related to noise. The fencing will be part of the development, acting as both a noise and visual buffer. And onsite staff 24/7 are part of the proposed business operation. So the businesses proposed operate with training measures to reduce problem behaviors such as barking and overexcitement. The development is subject to Regulation 7.21 of the city's development regulations is outlined below. So the kennel use shall be subject to the following conditions. 7.21.1, appropriate noise and separation measures shall be incorporated into the development to reduce noise impact on surrounding properties. 7.21.2, where external runs shall be provided as part of the kennel, the use shall be limited to locations in the use zone, which do not abut residential zones or uses. And 7.21.3, council shall be satisfied that the kennel shall not impact upon surrounding residential neighborhoods. So notice of the application was posted on the city's website and was published in the Telegram on Saturday, August 12. The notice was also circulated to 81 property owners within the 150-meter radius of the proposed development on August 9. And in addition to the Member of Parliament, the two MHAs, the Mount Pearl Paradise Chamber of Commerce. And prior to deciding on the application, comments from the general public were submitted in writing no later than 12:00 noon on Tuesday, August 22. The city did receive four written submissions and two telephone calls expressing concerns regarding the proposed development. And the summary of the concerns were, as I mentioned previously, noise levels, particularly during evening hours and overnight, reduced property values, animal waste disposal and odors, competing with other animal grooming and pet-related businesses, traffic congestion concerns on Commonwealth Avenue, and the location of the kennel use in the center of the city. So at the public briefing session, the concerns raised related to animal feces, noise, overall design of the facility, fencing, and bylaw enforcement were addressed. Therefore, our committee recommends approval of this discretionary use application, and that a development permit be issued, subject to council satisfaction that adequate noise mitigations are met, so as not to disturb the neighboring property owners or businesses, and subject to regulatory conditions as set out by the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Development. And I so move.
It is moved by councillor Fry, and also segmented by councillor Rice. Any questions, council? As we go through a process, a process that's required by the Rural Planning, Rural and Urban Planning Act, and also specified in our regulations. It's nice to see that this business could get approved in a few minutes. And we also noticed a development permit for another similar business. So looks like the dogs have it these days. And this is a welcome business, I think, to the city of Mount Pearl. I can see the concerns, and I can sense why they were brought up. And, you know, frankly, the noise, they must abide by all of our noise regulations. With regard to dog feces, I'm assuming that'll be controlled by, you know, daily, daily cleaning and daily pickup. It'll be restricted by fencing and that in the site. And really, there's no residential neighbors that are right next door. But I would think we do appreciate the people who turned up and gave us feedback at the end of the day. And we want to make sure that, you know, a residential neighborhood that's nearby can, you know, can continue to thrive like it is now, and also have a dog grooming business or a dog, sorry, a dog kennel business nearby. And I think the two are compatible. Something new for the city, and I think our residents overall will like to see this type of business being opened. Any comments, council, from anybody else? Councillor Fry? Close the debate?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the briefing session was was well-attended, and the proponent did genuinely address concerns of those in attendance. And I think at the end of it, people were, people were very happy. And it's going to be nice to see something in that location. That location's been vacant for a while. So it'd be nice to see it developed as well.
All right. No other hands up? I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Counter-minded? Carried. I didn't see you. Sorry.
I just wanted to note that I'm abstaining in voting on this due to a conflict.
Staining or declaring a conflict?
I guess it would be declaring a conflict, so I won't be voting on this matter.
Okay. Noted, I think, by the city clerk, as well as the mid assistant who's taking the notes tonight. Thank you. Next is the Corporate Services and Public Works Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. No, thank you. All right. The first item for us are the invoices for approval. And you can see before you, we have a total of 11 invoices totaling $1,787,715.1. And just to highlight some of the higher costing ones there, number three is the wastewater and wastewater second quarter for 2023, the city of St. John's for $191,838.95. Our water consumption for July 2023 was $245,722.62. Our regional fire cost for the month of August, $460,283.33. And St. John's Transportation Commission, our transit service cost for July of 2023, $104,295.95. And just the last two, your worship, in case anybody is curious, the Ulineen ground mount benches, and number 11 is the picnic table. These are the the metal. We see some examples of these down to the Forest Avenue location. They're, they're accessible to the tables that are accessible to everyone. I think the the benches include a total of nine benches that we've ordered. They're not here just yet. And there's five picnic tables there as well. But they'll be a great addition to our open spaces. And again, in line with our, our strategic mission to become more inclusive, more accessible to the city, this falls right in line with that strategy. So again, I move that the amount be accepted as presented.
It is moved by, it is moved by councillor Locke, seconded by councillor Antle, and councillor Antle, I think, has a question.
I have more of a statement, I guess, I suppose, as always, when you look at this here, it's a $1,078, $1,780. Right? I want to stress that, you know, 90% of this is regional services. Now, we certainly in Mount Pearl certainly pay our fair share. When the people say, you know, how does regional services affect our budget? Now, you can just take a look at this, everything, race water and fire department and buses, we pay it's almost $900,000 there. So just to reiterate that, we pay our fair share. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The second item for our committee is the payment register and the purchase card report for the information of council and our residents. The following payment register for August 17 to the 30 of 2023, total $2,453,250.37. And the purchase card report for April 25 to May 25, and then from May 26 to June 26, total $628,125.19. And they're all there before you. If there are any questions, we'll certainly answer any queries that may arise. Okay. Now noted, the third item for us, Mayor, is the appointment of our city clerk. At the August 8, 2023, meeting of the Committee of Hold, the committee was advised that a new incumbent was recommended for the position of Legislative Officer and City Clerk position. And the committee supported that the incumbent be hired effective August 28, 2023. So the Corporate Services Economic Development Committee, in accordance with Section 68 of the City So the Corporate Services Economic Development Committee, in accordance with Section sixty-eight of the City of Mount Pearl Act, recommend ratification of the appointment of the new incumbent for the position of the Legislative Officer, City Clerk, effective August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And we're delighted to have our new, um, City Clerk and Legislative Officer with us today, Miss Stephanie Walsh, and I so move.
It is moved by Council Locke and seconded by Council Rice, and, uh, yeah, it's nice to see the position being filled again, a very valuable position. I want to welcome Stephanie Walsh to our organization. She's already hit the ground running. Good to see you here at this first council meeting. Your nameplate will be arriving anytime soon. And thank you for that, uh, for the, for the motion, because that is required as a part of our act. And before I call the question, I'd like to invite the CIO just to talk about our city clerk. Not so much the person, but the position, and maybe a little bit about the person, because you have had a week now to get to know each other.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm delighted to have Stephanie Tiller Walsh with us. It's been vacant for a while, as you said, and it is a critical position. The city clerk provides such support to council in terms of documenting your decisions and, and our records management. But it's also a role that's just so important from a policy perspective, making sure we're meeting our legislative requirements. It does a lot of research. And it was a gap in the city when, uh, when I first came here, so it's been a really critical role to keeping up with the policy. Stephanie brings a lot of background in, you know, she's got a legal background, she's got a lot of government public service policy background, and I'm sure she's just going to fit in great with the team. And I can't wait to get her, she's already been put to work. She's got a briefing note in front of me today, so she's a whippersnapper for sure. Thanks. Welcome, Stephanie.
All right, so any other comments or questions? All right, let's get down to work. All in favor, motion, anybody contra, motion carried. Thank you. Back to you, or over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I may have misspoke. I, I called her Stephanie Walsh. I knew her as Stephanie Tiller, but I guess it's Tiller Walsh, and I apologize if I misspoke there. And I know CEO mentioned all the great assets of, uh, Ms. Tiller Walsh, but perhaps her greatest asset is that she's a Husky graduate, so. Go Huskies. Sorry, I just had to throw that in there. Sorry, sorry, had to throw. Anyways, welcome, Stephanie. We're delighted to have you. Uh, the last item for us, uh, Mayor, is the Public Works Status Report. And at our committee, we went down through all these here. The first one there, just to note that we had a review of our Public Works Emergency Checklist for Storm Preparations. It is that time of year, um, throughout the city. So again, uh, Mr. Doleman and his crew make sure that the city is in, uh, storm-ready position, you know, with, with respect to our storm sewers and the like. And we do have a contingency plan in place should, uh, anything out of the norm occur, so that, uh, that's good to know. We also reviewed the Emergency Response Plan and as well as the, uh, city's emergency and environmental response trailers. Uh, we went through all the, uh, the contents of that, so, um, we are well-prepared. Um, we always, we always are in, in event that anything pops up, so that was, uh, that was good to review that. With respect to roads, our work is continuing as, as Council Frye outlined tonight, some of the work that's ongoing with respect to, you know, curbs and gutters and catch basins and underground infrastructure throughout various areas of the city. The lawn repairs are completed for the season. Uh, we got our street and sidewalk sweeping ongoing, as well as our household recycling and bulk garbage collection continues with, in addition to any asphalt work. Uh, with respect to our parks, our new trail rule, signage are being installed along the, uh, T-rail, the trailway there. Again, just to encourage people that there's various modes of, of transport along the, the trailway. So, uh, just to remind people of proper etiquette and, and respect and politeness towards all users of our trails. Uh, Phase Two of the Urban Forestry Plan continues. I think, uh, last meeting, we were awaiting our, um, coniferous trees to arrive, so I think they may have be here and, and in the process of being installed. Our commemorative bench program work is ongoing. Uh, great to see some trailway trimming underway. I, I do note, uh, along the Sunrise Trail, that our crews have done some great work along, uh, trimming some of the trees around our, our lights along the trailways, which has, which has certainly greatly enhanced the, uh, illumination of our lights and the, uh, and the brightness of the trailways during the darker periods. Work is continuing at our Team Guji baseball field in preparation, uh, for the twenty twenty-five Summer Games. Uh, overseeding, fertilizing, work on the bullpens, I think Council, or Director Doleman mentioned today that there was, I think, eight trailers coming with all the clay that's going to be necessary for the infield. So, uh, when that work is done, we're going to have, uh, literally a state-of-the-art field ready for the twenty twenty-five, uh, games, and we're welcoming all participants with open, with open arms. Our continued work is ongoing with respect to the landscape and our beds, our hanging baskets, our sports fields, playgrounds, trails, and open spaces. Uh, with respect to our fleet, ongoing service and maintenance continues, and service work on snow blowers, loaders, flyers is underway, and we will be ready when that first flake of snow falls. And with respect to, uh, UTM, our general calls are ongoing. We still continue with our plug sewers, location of our, uh, service, um, devices, new water and sewer and, uh, service inspections, camera inspections and troubleshooting, hydrant flushing and valve exercising programs ongoing in the Old Precinct Road, Richard Nolan Drive and Commonwealth Avenue and related areas. Again, this is a part of our, our ongoing maintenance. Hydrant repairs and painting continue. Our leak detection, I brought up in meeting today that, uh, we got honorable mention in the shoreline from CBS. Our partners in CBS, uh, are also looking at leak detection, similar to what the City of Mount Pearl has been undertaking and the huge success that we've had with reducing our water consumption from an environmental perspective and also from an economic perspective, the cost of water that we pay, uh, uh, monthly, as, uh, Council Antle just pointed out. Our catch basin cleaning is ongoing, storm jet air, uh, storm sewer jetting, sorry, repairs for our water and sewer. And of course, lift stations and inspections and maintenance are ongoing. So as always, our crews, uh, there's a lot of work ongoing at the city. There's a lot of moving parts, and we have very competent professional people, the day in, day out, uh, do great work for our residents to make sure that everything is running tickety-boo. And the last item there, you can see, is the water levels at our water reservoir at Babel's Big Pond as of August twenty-eighth. And again, you can see that twenty twenty-three levels are above twenty twenty-two levels, which were above twenty twenty-one levels. So our water levels are in very good shape at the Babel's Big Pond, um, water reservoir. And that is it for our committee report, Mayor. I thank you.
Good report. Thank you for delivering, and we'll do a little quick roundtable tonight. Council Frye's first.
You know, it's hard to believe it's September already. But as I was thinking about yesterday and how beautiful it was and our, our Labor Day weekend, you know, I was driving around the city over the weekend, and I was noticing the beautiful flowers and the flower baskets and, and the, the gardens that are so nicely manicured. And, and it made me really, like, it made me really notice and how nice it was and how pretty it was. And, and then, of course, with Labor Day, it just seemed fitting that I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of our staff. We have a wonderful staff, and the, the work that they do doesn't go unnoticed. So if you can please pass along my thank you to whoever does, uh, the flowers and the, and the, the gardening, and it's just, I think they did a fabulous job keeping our, keeping our, our city beautiful. And also, um, just want to say thank you. I know I always talk about volunteers and how blessed we are to have them here in the city. But on August the twenty-sixth, our, our Super Saturday Soccer took place. And I was thinking about all the sports that we have and the volunteers and the board of directors and the staff and the parents and the coaches and the, and, and the players, and, and how many people come together to make this possible for the kids, and, and they so enjoy it. I mean, there was one little group playing, and they were so little, and the ball went in around. Some of the people that are watching, some of the spectators and the entire team went behind the spectators. He's chasing after the ball, like, it was just the sweetest thing.
Best part was the hot dogs.
And the hot dogs were really good, too. But, you know, it, it's, uh, we're very fortunate in Mount Pearl to have such strong recreation programs, and it's because of the volunteers we have. So I just want to send a thank you to, um, to all of our, all of those involved in soccer and all of our other sports. And that's it for me, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well said. Over to you, Council Locke.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just two for me. I just want to, uh, acknowledge the, uh, the opening event that we had on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, at the kiosk down on Forest Avenue. It was a, it was a great event, very well-attended, um, with Eva's ice cream and, and we also celebrated the opening of our accessible community gardens down there. So, uh, it certainly developed into a lovely area. It's going to be a destination, I think, for years to come. Uh, I acknowledged before the fruit trees we have planted down there and, uh, Presto's, I think, was the other food truck, was it, that we had down there as well? So, uh, and Dave Witty played, played music. It was just such a nice event, which again is a part of our, uh, twenty-five-year plan, the Find Your Center City Revival, uh, plan, and our, our hope is, our goal is, and we're heading down that, that pathway, is to, um, is to bring more people down to the trailway and destinations throughout. And we have another event coming up in September that will do just that as well with some, uh, some musical events, again, down along the trailway, I think in Billard Avenue in this particular case. So it was an exciting event, and I was happy to be down there. And the other one for me, of course, is, uh, tomorrow is, uh, first day of school for children. Council Lane asked me if I missed not going back to work today as a teacher. Um, and I missed it more last year. Um, there's always a little tinge of me that it's always exciting. But just a reminder now that tomorrow morning, I have a little granddaughter who has been waiting for this day for about two years now. She's had her clothes picked out and her backpack ready to go since the start of June. So she's super excited to attend kindergarten. So keep in mind that the children tomorrow, their, their main focus is getting back to school, and it won't be necessarily the traffic. So I just encourage our residents to please be extra vigilant tomorrow. There's going to be a lot of hectic parents trying to get into the back-to-school routine, and there's going to be a lot of, uh, hyper-excited children, so just, just keep your eyes on, on the streets and, uh, and drive cautiously in all our school zones. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Change is in the air, and we'll have our municipal enforcement out, and of course, we'll be monitoring school bus safety as best we can here in the city of Mount Pearl. It's really important that not just you pay attention to students, not just in the school zones, but in their neighborhoods as they walk or they get on transportation. It's, uh, you said it really well when you said, um, they're really thinking about school and not necessarily think about how they're getting there and what's going on with all the traffic. Over to you, Council Antle.
Your worship, just a couple of things for me. And as Council Frye was saying, our recreation programs are strong. Well, we have a new recreation program here in City Mount Pearl, a pickleball courts. We have a pickleball already involved at the summit. But we also now have a pickleball court on Park Avenue. So if you're driving down Park Avenue to Stephen Thistle Park, you'll see our new pickleball court. Those, well-attended, right? The city, our city staff did a great job installing that, but pickle fans, pickleball fans can take advantage of this themselves. I got this from Jason, and I think he said that pickleball is, uh, is a cross between, uh, ping-pong, tennis, and badminton. So it's quite interesting, and it's a growing sport. So if anybody wants to take a chance or learn how to, learn a new sport on a park avenue, it's free. Just take your own paddles and off you go.
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the first snowfall. But to your point, if I may ask, you or Director Collins, um, let's talk about Gloria Pearson Center, the Reed Center this fall, and the offerings that are there, because I know other municipalities are block solid, and I suspect we are too.
We are block solid. Um, the schedule was posted last week. Uh, people are already registering for times. We've expanded our offering season over season over season the past three, past year or so. It is a fast-growing sport that's easily played by many people. That's, that's making it so popular. And if people are unfamiliar with it, Google it or look at YouTube. It's amazing what you see. And just drive by. The courts are being well-used, and it's in high demand.
It's fun. All right, back to you, Counselor.
But I think I agree that, I think the mayor and, uh, Council Frye should have a game of pickleball. I'll sit to the next committee meeting, and we'll play it on, on Stephen Thistle Park. Maybe we'll have a fundraiser for a food bank, so, right? And the last item for me is the concert series in the park is all over. But last weekend, I had the opportunity to sit down, I had lunch, and Christine Henneberry was there, and Christine, if you all know Christine, she does storytelling. And most times, her storytelling is for children. So myself and my wife sat down there and had our lunch, and it was Count Silvernose. So as she started to get into her story and got into, I really got into this story. I highly recommend that next time we have a function, we'll have to get Christine here to tell us the story about Count Silvernose. It was quite enjoyable. I tell you, it was so, so good, and, uh, I think I'll have to tell you guys again. And that's everything for me, your worship.
Thank you so much. Over to you, Council Rice.
Thank you, Worship. Um, so first I want to say, I guess, a bouquet of flowers or roses, whatever, to Mount Pearl Chamber of Commerce, because they're, uh, been pretty busy. They're always busy, but they've been extra busy, I guess, this past several weeks and months. So the, tomorrow, uh, September the sixth, they got a job fair at the Reed Center. Uh, so, and if you go on the city website, there's a listing of all the, all the, I guess, the companies that are part of the Mount Pearl, uh, Paradise Chamber of Commerce. So if you get a chance to go up tomorrow, uh, drop by the Reed Center and, uh, be all kinds of boots set up, up there. And, you know, get a chance to make your rounds, and also, um, I mean, we had so much stuff happening in the last, since, since last public council, uh, I mean, I mean, the soccer, the Super Soccer Saturday was phenomenal. The, the, uh, the ball hockey, or I guess the, uh, yeah, Street Jam one was another phenomenal part, but also myself and, uh, Council Antle had, uh, I guess, opportunity and the honor of going up playing in the golf tournament, uh, Mount Pearl Paradise Chamber of Commerce on August the twenty-fourth. And we had quite the day. It started out, uh, started a bit drizzly, but it turned out to be a fantastic day. Uh, and the last item for me, your worship, is, uh, I want to mention actually, uh, uh, Team Canada, Terry Ryan's on this team and several are Newfoundlanders. Uh, Terry lives here in, in, uh, Mount Pearl, and, uh, they took gold at the twenty twenty-three ISBHF Men's Masters, uh, World Ball Hockey Championship. Uh, so Terry Ryan from Mount Pearl, and other Newfoundlanders are Ryan Delaney, uh, Chris Sparks, uh, Michael Williams, and Jeremy Bishop. So I want to say congratulations to the five of those guys on a, under big gold medal championship for Team Canada. Thank you.
Go Canada. Well done, Mr. Ryan and company. Over to you, Council Lane.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to mention that the Mount Pearl Community Supper will be commencing again on September thirteenth. Uh, the volunteers took a little break for the summer, but they're ready to start back again, and they'll be offering a meal for anyone in need at one eleven, uh, Richard Nolan Drive. And on the thirteenth, which is a Wednesday, they'll be offering cold plates for dinner. So I encourage any residents in need to go there and, um, get a good free meal. I also wanted to mention that Alex Taylor, who's no, no, um, no stranger here in the chamber, his name said often, as he does a lot of community work. He again recently had a concert, um, with donations going to the food bank. So thank you to Alexander for doing that. Uh, again, this, I think it's his third year doing that, actually. Um, and it's always well-attended, and he always gets a lot of donations, so that's fantastic. Um, I also had the honor of attending the Salvation Army had a family fun day at Powers Pond. Um, and I went up there with Serena and Greece, and, and let me tell you, the place was packed. The kids were everywhere, run wild, having a great time. Um, it was such a great community event, and it was great to see so many people out enjoying it. The weather was perfect. So I wanted to send a huge thank you to the church for, for putting that off, because, um, you know, it was, it was a great event. Everyone enjoyed themselves, and the best part was everything was free. So anybody could go and enjoy hamburger, hot dog, popcorn, cotton candy, face painting, bounty castles. Uh, it was just, it was amazing to be there. Um, and that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, I had a little list here. Uh, you all covered that off quite well, so I'm going to digress and, uh, say it's good to see you all, a good welcome to, uh, uh, to Stephanie, our new city clerk. And the business of the city does not come to an end with the council meeting. We'll be here later on this evening, and the work continues tomorrow. Um, on motion of Council Frye and seconded by Council Antle, we are adjourned.